With allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, and the roll call show all board members are present except for Eric Strandberg. Um, I'm assuming we had no citizen comments because we had no citizens. Um, we will move to board member committee reports. Um, we'll start with Sue.
I attended the district back to school meeting last Wednesday morning where Ben addressed the whole group and enjoyed that welcome. And yeah, I thought it was really cool that the students were there. That was kind of a, a nice touch and having them speak, that was pretty cool. Very cool. Um, I also met with uh, the student reps and I would like to welcome Morgan Munt. Um, who is our newest member and um, so we just did a little orientation so they kind of feel comfortable tonight. And then we'll meet with Ben later. Um, and that's up.
All right, thank you. Don?
I had agenda planning and then I also attended the welcome back last Wednesday and um, it's an exciting time because it's so different than in the end of the year, but there was just so much energy and it's exciting to see that.
What's going on? Eric?
Um, I just had finance before this meeting.
Okay, Melissa?
Uh, I also went to the welcome back morning, which was very great. Um, I also did just for the heck of it and MSBA, the Read Act webinar they just came out with, just to kind of see if there was anything more interesting that caught my eye and if there was anything about paying for back um, curriculum and stuff like that. And I didn't hear anything different. I was watching with my youngest and a puppy, so there's that, but I didn't hear anything that stood out. Um, I also attended the uh, ninth grade open house because I like to go and talk to the parents about our career academies. Uh, but because Janet was six, it's only one person, I also ended up helping her do, trying to get families enrolled for the educational benefits, which was, used to be the free and reduced lunch. Um, a lot of families, I guess, don't realize that um, you know, you can get school fees waived and activity fees and all that kind of stuff. So I was able to help her out since she had to be back at the middle school. So that was kind of, I mean, that was nice. I think there were, most people had already filled it out or kind of just were like, okay, but there were a couple of families that were like, oh, really? So hopefully everybody filled that out. And then I also presented at the primary to all the teachers and staff there about uh, PTO point plan, which is just maybe something for people to know about the um, primary and intermediate. The PTO is trying to get more parents and teachers involved. And um, so we're giving points for two teachers when parents show up at a meeting or show up to volunteer and you get points for your teacher and whoever and has the most wins money from the PTO. So um, we're just trying to get people more involved there because as some of you probably know that volunteerism is kind of down when it comes to a lot of our kids' stuff, which is sad. So we're working on.
Chad? Okay. Um, I had agenda planning and I did attend the welcome back. Um, and then we just had finance before this meeting, so. Student council?
Yeah, Sue kind of already did it, but this is um, Morgan Munt, who I'm happy to introduce to all of you. She also happens to be my, one of my best friends. So I'm excited to um, kind of lead her, but also dump all this on her as I leave. Um, we don't really have anything to report. Um, we met with Sue to kind of help Morgan and just recap on the year. Um, the first day, I think everything went well there. Um, link leaders reported back good. My brother came home all excited, so that's always a good sign. Um, one thing I wanted to know, kind of, we still have a while yet, but homecoming is October 11th on a Friday. And then um, the dance is actually, I think, I don't have this a hundred percent confirmed, but it's going to be that following Saturday, the 12th. Um, so homecoming, October 11th, the dance is the 12th, the dance, don't take my word for, um, I don't know if we're still in the process of getting that approved or not. Um, and then my mom mentioned career academies and that kind of reminded me that um, there are students from Malacca, I think, that just moved. Um, and they joined cross-country and we were talking to them like, oh yeah, why'd you move? And um, they moved because they had more opportunities here than Malacca. From what I can tell. So that's kind of neat that they moved schools, they didn't move houses, they moved schools because of the opportunities, which I'm assuming is probably career academy stuff related. So that's kind of cool that the hard work that MeVall and you guys and Sorensen and all that guy's been putting in work is kind of getting noticed, which is nice. So, uh, yeah.
That, that says a lot for them to upgrade in their high school years because usually that's
One is a junior here and one is a new freshman.
Okay. Wow. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Ben?
Well, I want to apologize to the board for having such a short board agenda this evening. It's the second uh, meeting in a row that we've had a fairly short agenda. It's just when we look back at the year, there's some uh, some months that we have very long agendas and some um, very short. And I guess we don't ever feel like we need to add fluff um, to any agenda. So uh, I'm happy to speak as long or as little as you'd like me to. Um, after I am completed with this meeting here, I will be joining the American uh, Indian Parent Advisory. Uh, that we have our first kick up, up meeting this evening and uh, Cal uh, is our new American Indian advisor and it will be exciting to support him in that role this evening. And from what I understand, we have a very large turnout of RSVPs, which is uh, kind of unusual. We haven't had that good of a turnout in, in the past, so that's good. And we're hoping that we can really get uh, get our, our program improved there. And I am really feeling optimistic about that. Uh, we had a great first week with all of our teachers last week and uh, you know, we had to do some modifying and adjusting on fly that day that I was presenting because we did have a a national presenter who wasn't able to attend. And that was really talking about restorative practices and restorative uh, justice. Um, just helping us uh, build staff development around building community with our, in our schools and, and improving conflict resolution if there is conflict. And of course, uh, somewhat inevitable um, being that we're in the human being business and we have lots of humans in our, in our building. So it's something that we'll continue to work on um, and, and reschedule and, and those kinds of things. We had uh, more than usual, uh, we've had some uh, late hires. And uh, one thing that I really did emphasize to our team members, this may have been after some of the board members left and I was still in there with the auditorium in the pack, just to make sure that we're making sure that our new team members feel super welcoming and a sense of belonging and kill them with kindness and love. Because you know, they made some late minute last decisions to kind of uproot their life to make a, a change to come be a part of our team. So I'm really wanting to make those people feel like they're at home. And a lot of work went into uh, our, you know, hiring from our admin late in the game as well. And you know, it's tricky because, you know, when we're in the financial situation that we are, we're, we have to be a little bit more conservative with our staffing. It's hard to hire peo- people unless we know we have the students here. And when we have, it seems like the trend has been late uh, registration, where we will get many students in August to enroll. And of course, you need to have your proportions with student staff ratios, um, you know, where you want it to be and respectable. And we did end up um, making a decision to hire another first grade teacher, uh, because that class was starting to get uh, we were one over what our guidelines were, then we started to get to be two over, which was in that 26 range. So now that's backed out to the 22, 23 range. So I um, feeling good about that, but some transition work that's happening there. Today's first day of school. It's a great day. Um, you know, I think our biggest issue that I'm aware of anyways was just some transportation uh, pieces. And Michelle worked closely with Palmer on that. We did have one bus that was uh, significantly running behind. And there are some other issues that we're working through, a lot of questions and things and appeals on bus stops and those kinds of things that we're still working through as well. And again, Michelle's done a nice job feeling some of those and very few of them hit my desk, but every now and then they do. But even today, she was out driving out in the country, taking a look at the safety of certain bus stops and those kinds of things. So um, that was good. Uh, feeling like our building grounds are in, in good solid shape. Um, buildings are clean and safe, so that's, that's good. Um, IT is working really hard with all of the devices and lots of IT tickets and things that they're diligently working through. Um, you mentioned uh, just going off more on that teaching and learning set of things. You mentioned the Read Act. Um, feeling, still feeling really good about that, that the legislation that you talked about, there's two pots of money. One, one of which we have lots of discretion to utilize um, for materials in training. And then there's a pot of money that's very limited and how we use that. As a matter of fact, we do even have to come up with a MOU with our teachers union to be able to utilize some of that pot of money. And that's being worked on and talked about right now as well. But I'm really just excited to get our, our students in the classroom, get our teacher teach, teachers teaching and getting into the swing of things. Because you know, we really, some of my messaging to the staff that's going to continue to hammer on is just really focusing on academics, really trying to move that needle on student achievement. Um, especially in those basic skill areas, in those elementary grades, exploring more into middle school and then really preparing our, our students to propel into those career academies uh, in the high school level. So excited just to start getting our hands dirty and just teach and learn. So that's going to be, that's going to be good. Um, one thing that we did talk about in finance committee that I think uh, the board needs to be aware of is Rum River, our special ed co-op is pretty eager to get boards to take a vote on whether or not we would support uh, that uh, building that they would like to build. And again, just summarizing when they came here and spoke to us. Uh, we currently uh, have a couple of different level four programs in our school district. That is something that we absolutely need and we're blessed to have Rum River to have that as an option for our level four students. Um, but we currently lease a building that is old and decrepit. And we spend a lot of money leasing a building that's old and decrepit. Um, and that building, uh, we need to spend more, multi-millions of dollars to uh, make the necessary upgrades to be compliant. Um, and the question has always been, do you stick that kind of money into an old balling ball, that one building that we don't own? Um, and we don't know how long we're going to be there. Or do you, at some point, do we purchase, you know, an actual building and have Rum River own something? So the structure of this, this bond would be kind of using the lease levy authority to basically lease to own a building. So after a certain number of years, I think it's 20, that uh, that building would be owned by the co-op then. And uh, if I, I, I'll have to ask a question to get the, the specific answer for you, but um, I believe that you know, we will own, because we are approximately 35% of the co-op, because we're the largest. If we were to ever leave the co-op, then that equity of that building would come back to us. Okay? Um, but the, for that to go through, all six member district boards would have to approve that. Okay? So there's, there, you know, basically she contacted me on a regular basis saying, what else do you need? And they are available to come present uh, or be available for questions one more time at our next meeting if you thought that you would like to have that. Um, I did, I think, send you some outdated numbers on what that would cost the taxpayers. And it's just important to note that that, those numbers are annually. So if you're going to take that out for, you know, what it would cost each month, it's going to be probably between one and $2 a month, depending on how expensive your home is. Um,
I also think it's important, and maybe she, I missed the meeting where Tanya was here, but um, I'm on that governing board. And one of the things they were telling us when we first brought this up was also just the security at the building is so like, just not functional for getting them in and out and students in and out and like everyone everywhere safe, safely, because of the, a level four, you have more, you have to have a little, a little bit more maybe security for in and out and doors locking and some of the things instead of being able to like scan in and out, it's a physical block and it's all different. And that was one of the things that when they were talking about it, I just thought if, that's just so difficult, I guess. I you're trying to keep everyone safe and yeah.
Well, and the internet, yeah, the, the internet, a lot of times when you think of security, you're thinking, oh, you don't want people to come in that shouldn't be there. But you know, and what they deal a lot with is a load round, you know, the students running, you know, and running out on roads that are perfectly safe to be running out onto when they're in, in a really dis- regulated state.
Yeah.
So I mean, I'll, I'll consult with uh, Chair Olm on, you know, whether she'd like, or you'd like to have them come back next meeting or not. I guess you'd need to give her some feedback on that or me feedback. Um, otherwise, any questions or things that you had, we certainly can do some of that via email as well. Um, but it would be prepping us for a vote in October. Um, and I don't know if it would be the first or the second meeting in October, but we've had this as an information item with them presenting me, um, you know, sharing some information tonight. And like I said, they, they can answer questions email or come back.
Was it Malacca's, correct? The, the property?
I believe that, yes, the, the, the property that they're looking at right now is in Malacca. And from what I understand, that's uh, a good location because it's one of the most centrally located spots for a good portion of the, the member districts.
Do you know which building it is?
I think they're talking new construction.
It's, it's new, it's a new construction. It'd be a new, a new building.
So there's an empty lot there.
Yes.
That's a couple acres.
The west of the current high school.
That's the property I think of the adjacent to
Yeah, I think you're right. So, yeah.
I remember correctly.
They showed, yeah, they showed a, the plot in that presentation.
Yeah.
Or, you know, and if any board member wanted to go out and take a tour of their current location, you know, we can drive out there and pop around too. I mean, whatever you'd like. But I just want to make sure that you feel prepared um, to take that vote. And you know, we could vote yes, or our board could vote yes, and all it takes is one board to vote no. And then from what I understand, it's a dumb deal, it's not going to happen. At least for now, right?
And there's six, correct?
Six, yes. And Melissa, because she uh, sits on that governing board too, she would be a good resource if any of you want her to get additional information from the board's perspective. She can do that as well.
Hmm. I can't find the presentation right now, but it is like a chunk of some acreage. And it would be a new build, from what I remember.
Yeah, they showed us some of that when they came.
Yeah, I'm sure it was the same.
I think you guys were in Europe when you came, yeah.
I was traveling the world, I'm so sorry.
In terms of uh, student enrollment, I'll try and get you as, you know, many updated numbers as I can, as soon as we feel comfortable. You know, that they're accurate.
How is the virtual one coming along?
Uh, we're up a few more than, I think the last time that I talked to you, I think uh, the new K8 POM for Princeton Online Minnesota is uh, I believe 66 or 67. And uh,
It's getting there.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, the good thing is, is um, you know, there's additional revenue with every, you know, student that, that we acquire, but there's also expenditures. Um, we're happy that, you know, even right now, getting started, our revenue is exceeding expenditures um, by close to 70,000. And, and we hope, we think that that number is going to go up. So um, we did have to add, actually add another halftime teacher because we in, in that world, we have, we try and have no more than 40 students per teacher. And in our elementary setting, I think we got up to like 50. So I mean, we have some room there to grow without even having to add any additional staff as, and our hope is that we would do that.
Okay.
So I'll entertain any questions that you have with me. Otherwise uh, you know, part of, part of what we need to do is um, you know, we work really hard to get, get the school year started. And then, you know, for us, there's a little bit of a pause that we just need to let our people do their work. And uh, and that's what I'm excited to have happen. So I, every day this week is, we're going to be tested more because we, I think uh, today um, we didn't have all of our students. Tomorrow, we will have nearly all of our students, I think, except for maybe one grade.
Best pick on drop off date ever at the primary.
That was just a
Yeah, it was a second grade only. I was like, all right.
Yeah. Yep. So every day that we'll get tested more.
And everybody made it through the construction up by the schools today?
I didn't hear the, I didn't hear any huge issues.
They were supposed to have an open for open house for the primary and the intermediate, and they didn't open it until the, like seven and primary or intermediate's open house ended at 6:30. So I was there selling shirts for PTO. It was so funny.
Roundabout wasn't open?
No, no, it wasn't. But it is now, but it was just like, oh man, it was a hot mess. I mean, it all got figured out, but yeah, yeah.
I, I, one, one other thing I'll mention is that um, I do intend to reach out to all of the candidates who have filed to be on school board, just to see if they're interested to sit down for coffee and go through um, you know, the MSBA role of a school board member and answer any questions and just talk about our school district with them. Um, you know, some, some will take me up on it and some may not, but at least I'll extend that offer. And I do think that there's a candidate forum coming up as well, so.
When is it? I believe it's next Monday. Isn't it Monday?
Monday.
Yes, Monday. It's Monday.
Right?
Yes.
Where is it?
The ninth.
Primary.
The 11th and the 16th. There's three of them.
Chamber.
Yeah, it's all Doing three of them.
Yeah.
The seven, or I'm sorry, the ninth is the school board. The 11th is the Baldwin candidate.
Baldwin.
Then when's the next one?
The 16th.
The, the next Monday, then the 16th.
Oh, there it is. I have a representative shares for the Shurber and thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shurber, yeah. And, and Shurber. They're very funny, but you guys are great.
And just for your awareness, I, I am scheduled to speak uh, to the Lions Club next Monday, just to give them an update on our school system. And I will try and sneak uh, to the forum if I get a chance, if there's still time after the Lions meeting.
Any questions? President of Leo Club.
Any questions for Ben?
I um, in reading in the clippings, there's been a lot of clippings about school districts um, adopting new cell phone policies. Are we in process with that or where are we at?
Well, we, um, well, Don, as you know, chairs the policy committee and we've talked um, in our policy meeting about it. And she's attended some of the MSBA state meetings about that particular topic. My uh, I guess my thought was that it's, I think, required that we have something in place by March. I don't know if it was mid-March or late March or something like that. Um, as you've all read in the clippings, there are some school districts that decided to get out in front of that and, you know, adopt one early or, you know, right off the bat. Um, I guess I didn't feel like there was a huge need that we had to be, you know, one of the first districts in the state to adopt that. But that is something that uh, my hope is to talk to our administrators in our administrative council meeting, um, which will have one next week. And then um, ask them for some feedback. And then I'd like to bring that feedback to our policy committee. And then we can develop a plan on how to proceed to come up with a policy. Um,
There is this, like a model that the, was it the principals association did?
Yeah, they, they did like a handbook or they did a, it's, it's not a model policy per se. They put together like a
It's like a handbook.
A handbook of options and things to think about, which I was honestly a little bit disappointed in because like, I don't, we don't really want to write a whole new policy, but I'm fairly certain that some of the districts that have created their new policy that they've adopted, we should be able to get our hands on some of those as some examples.
Sure.
And then we can see, you know, what direction we want, want to go. I mean, you're going to see the gamut of some places um, could say, you know, we're going to continue to keep, keep it teacher discretion in the classroom. You could have some places that say we're going to ban them all together. And then you'll probably see a lot of uh, middle ground that, that we've all been hearing a lot about is that um, you know, they're not to be out in the classroom and, you know, you can use them during passing time of lunch, you know, in some, some fashion of that. And you know, even with that is, you know, forget legislation. Here's an example of how most local school boards and schools already have some level of handbook or procedure related to cell phones. Um, but now the requirement is that we have a district policy. And that district policy, you know, even could be, uh, it could be vague enough to give some uh, authority for each building to have some flexibility of your own. Yeah, I mean, for the mo- for a lot, a lot of our policies, it's big picture. And then the specific items are listed in each of the school's handbook in terms of what, you know, the procedures are for that day. But yeah, you're right. That is something that's got to be on our to-do list. It's just
People are just asking because they're reading it in the paper.
Yeah.
Well, what is, what are you doing? They're reading, they're in the paper almost every other day.
Yes.
It's a new school that has that.
Exactly. We know what Hannah and, no, Hannah and's doing.
I don't know. What um, a lot of schools are doing is each building will have a different policy. It's tailored for, and it's really tailored for within yours district. Um, is what I learned when I, was at the summer MSBA um, workshop, so. So I stand up there and, you know, want a lot of parent, community involvement in some of this as well.
Somebody have like people cut, like a open forum or something even.
Most of them did, yeah.
I think, I feel like those policies were more in-depth maybe than overarching, like the ones that, of course, now I can't remember any of the districts.
And, you know, some of it too will be um, you know, we already got some policies that technically can cover the requirement that we already have in place. And so really the March 25th isn't a hard set either because we could fall back on that if we don't. But um, because there is some overlap that we also got to look at some of our current policies where it's stated to kind of incorporate into this as well. So it'll be interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that whatever we come up with with a policy, I think it'd be somewhat foolish of us to try and do any kind of a drastic change with like a month left of school. So that, those are all the discussions that we'll have to talk about.
And how much enforcement with this kind of? I think we got to. All right. Any other questions for Ben?
Any pushback on the um, going cashless at the school for events and activity fees and things like that?
Was it cashless when you went? Malacca?
No, but it sounds really nice. I'm sure that would make Juan Debbie's job a lot easier at the high school. I know she handles all the money and, but for students, that would be nice just to not have to worry about cash and just have to pay.
Honey, oh.
I, there's Eric too, to answer your question, there, there's been nothing that's risen to the level to hit my desk.
I just sent you a text. I forwarded a text message.
Was it from, is it, so I, I don't know if I actually completed and sent the email, but do you, can you still accept cash or is it strictly cashless online only?
I will say that we are a late adopter in Mississippi Conference to going cashless. We will be amongst maybe one other school in our conference that have been the holdouts. And eventually, when we knew we were going to have to go to it, and that's what we're going to have to try and do. Um, which does bring me to the um, I don't know that we ever did have a, a deep discussion um, further other than an email that I had sent you regarding uh, potentially um, allowing senior citizens and free to events. So that is something that uh,
So there is already, I was already talked about that. So there are some seniors in our community that have a lifetime pass.
They buy a lifetime pass.
They, it was given to them. So they're like, you can't take this away from us. And I'm like, I didn't even know you had one.
They gave them a lifetime pass. Who gave them a lifetime pass?
Oh, for sure. They have a lifetime.
I'm not aware of
I'll have to ask them again, but he said he has a lifetime senior pass.
Card stuck and
I mean, that's awesome, but.
I never I got talking about that. We voted for, we sent an email about it. I don't remember voting for it.
Well, that was before your time.
Oh, didn't we do that, Ben?
So I just thought
Yeah, you're right, we did.
It's like
We did.
It's like quite a
Was it forever though?
Well, we've never unvoted that we once let them in free.
Is that what it is?
I'll, I'll get to, I'll, I'll get to the bottom of that tomorrow, but
And we got the Mississippi eight class.
You could, I checked that, cause I had people ask me last year and you just had to let Debbie know. And then you had to go in with the driver's license to show that you were a senior. And then you got the little card that said free.
Oh, so that must be what he ends.
Yeah.
So that must be what he ends.
I don't know.
But if you didn't do that, like, right, I just always paid because I wanted to pay. But so like your husband is like, he has to, you have to follow that procedure.
Got it.
But there are several that do. They, yeah, they really like to go and they like to go free.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I would hope we continue that.
They go cashless, they'll use for all the
Especially then all that we're going cashes because, you know, what if they don't have Online.
Increase your fees.
I don't like students, like when we get our IDs.
Well, I think, I think
Give them free. Not as all bands except like
You stayed Yeah. Can you like at the door still, like, could you use Apple Pay or buy your ticket at, like, if you didn't already have the ticket and you didn't realize it? Could you?
I think, I think there's an app that you need to have and then, and the app It's like, if, if you, if you went to any, any Minnesota State High School League state tournament or section tournament, you, if you go to a Twins game, if you go to a Lightning game, you, you have, you have your app and then you, and that's been the trend for a long, long time. And that is uh, you know, like I said, we held out as long as, as we can. We feel like eventually we're gonna have to move in that direction. And you know, there's pros and cons to all this. I mean, do we, uh, one of the biggest issues with, with this, and this has been this way in school districts forever, is you have tens of thousands of dollars of cash in, in school offices every day. And you, you rely on one or one person or two people to, you know, accommodate for all of that. And I'm thankful that we've always had very stand-up, strong people here. But that's, that unfortunately has gotten places in a little bit of trouble, right? And uh, this is, you know, that's just one of many reasons why places are moving in this direction. So I, I'll get a check in from Darren on the latest with that. He hasn't given me any feedback. Good, bad or ugly on that.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Ben? All right, let's go ahead and uh approve our agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Second, motion's been made by Eric Mayne, second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Agenda is approved. Item seven, discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those as presented?
No move.
Second, motion's been made by Chad, seconded by Sue. Um, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Minutes are approved. Consent agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Don. Any comments or questions?
I have a question on the, the filter of the screen. Sorry. There's a dollar a month on the separate screen.
There wasn't anything on there, yes.
I just thought that was like a notification for us or something. I guess I didn't.
You know, that's That's just a, a, a notification that
That it's coming.
They're, they're gonna do this. They're absolutely approval to do it. Yeah. But uncontent?
Yes. Or not let high schoolers go.
I think our board is probably more trustworthy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there'll be any kind of money changes at that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is approved. We have one information item tonight, and that is a first reading of policies. Any questions on those? The only, it looked like there wasn't anything significant other than, um, the only actual change, change was the substitute um. That was the one where they were raising ten dollars a day.
And we did talk about that in finance tonight.
You have any questions are um on that? Make sure you get those asked. That will be on a second reading at our next board meeting. We have no action items and no additions to the agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
All right, thanks, everybody.